Were made to able to complete, compete their agility test, written tests and panel interviews all at one time. And you can see the dates and the number of attendees. And May, May the seventh and May the eighth were just panel interviews only. Our hiring strategies. Social media and advertise. Uh, the following social media platforms have been heavily used since March. That's Facebook, Instagram and TikTok. A recruitment billboard service was purchased and was advertised back in March of 2025. A recruitment video through Richmond Metro was filmed in April of 2025 and is posted on our police Facebook. And if you go to our police Facebook and follow the link, you will see it. Uh, since beginning of our recruit recruitment efforts in March 2025, we have received and processed approximately 195 police applicants. We have processed and completed approximately forty-seven background applicants, including four dispatchers positions. These efforts have resulted in hiring seven new recruits, one pre-certified and one emergency communication operator. Four of the five, four of the hired recruits attend the basic academy now and will graduate in December. They will be assigned to training and released to full duty in the month of April. So they will not be released to, oh, at, in a solo capacity until April. That's when they'll be on their own. Uh, the, the recruits, the next three will start the academy January 26th and graduate in July 2027. After they, afterwards, they will be reassigned to training and release to full duty once again. But from the time we hire them, the time we go to the academy, if they're not certified, they got six months of academy, they got almost three months of FTO. So it's almost a, a year before they're in a solo capacity. So the ones that will graduate in, uh, July will be off full duty of solo capacity in October of 2027. Uh, the pre-certified officer has already completed his field training and he's already been assigned to the field. Our hiring strategies, other additional, other additional efforts on, on strategies being used to enhance recruitment and hiring. Uh, hiring recruitment committee of ten plus members have been formed and have had its first meeting. The committee members have assisted with panel interviews, background investigations, they attended events and other recruitment efforts. Uh, such as creating social media content. Uh, the process of applicant background investigation has been streamlined by recreating the packages, simple sections to try to reduce some of the redundancy. Uh, we have created a digital form as a barcode for potential interested parties to complete and submit online. So they can be contacted and guided through the process. This allows those undecided to reach out to us to get answers to questions they, they may have. And the barcode form is displayed at the hiring events and is available on Facebook as well. We have changed the process of reference checks by mail, by not mailing or relying on references to email back forms. We contacted references, references by telephone and that has helped to expedite the, the process of getting these references checked. Although we still have to mail out forms occasionally. Uh, we have started using the obstacle, the obstacle course at, uh, Creative Criminal for our physical agility, physical agility exams. And this course is built in compliance with the Virginia law fit standards. And we have created a continuous posting on NeoGo for DCGS certified applicants. Uh, second continuous posting for entry level applicants is also, is open separately. Separating the two postings will help us reach, uh, pre-search faster. And, and who will continually have the opportunity to apply. Additionally, the separation clarifies any confusion that applicants may have regarding salary, sign-on bonus, qualifications for pre-search or for non-pre-search. Our hiring summary, the reason why I went back from March the first to, to September, we did some reorganizations and reshifting of some personnel in our recruitment efforts. So the timeframe between March the first, 2025 and September 30th of 2025, total hiring events attended were thirteen. Uh, applicants received 196. Uh, background investigations were conducted, was forty-seven. Uh, total police positions filled were eight. Uh, total dispatch positions filled one and we two had, we had two open positions, those were new dispatch positions as was recently created. And we are in the process of trying to fill those two positions and go into backgrounds at this time. Uh, current open positions, we have ten positions of the ten, three positions, uh, unfunded until January the first of 2026. And two positions are frozen until July the first, 2026 due to budgets and we had the new pay scale and the new pay raises. Uh, that's, that was a factor and that was a decision. And maximum staffing for the police department is sixty-eight and currently we, uh, have a total of fifty-eight. Our, our hiring incentives, next slide. Our hiring incentives, we have a $20,000 bonus for certified police officers that are hired. An additional increase is based on the years of experience if they come from a primary, another law enforcement agency. And we take up to six years of experience to be considered. We have a 12,000 bonus for uncertified applicants hired after completion of their academy. We have a take-home car program after completing their FTO training. If they reside within a thirty-five mile radius of the city of Hopewell. Uh, we have the career development, we have that started again. They can go from senior officers, career officers to corporal and each advancement is, is a paying increase. Uh, educational funds reimbursements if they seeking a college degree. And there's a $4 referral bonus for any police officers who refers a potential candidate. And who are hired and they complete the, all the training requirements. Our community policing awards, uh, I will update that as well. Downtown engagement continues with the foot patrols downtown, our business checks, uh, when the Beacon Theater have, uh, scheduled events. We conducted directed patrols there and traffic enforcement continues on Randolph Road by the police insurance department. Uh, community engagement activities. On October the second, uh, community engagement officer attended the crime solved area fest along with members of the command staff at Scotts Park. We had national night out scheduled October 7th from five at seven. We talked about that. It was a nice event, wonderful turnout. October the fifteenth, a special Olympics fundraiser will be held at Heart is Oklahoma Miles from October and from, uh, and also on October 16th, a fundraiser will be held at the Clonier Heights Hardies. The community engagement officer will attend the trunk or treat at DuPont School from five-thirty to eight o'clock PM. And the date is, that is October the twenty-fourth. The community engagement officer will also participate, participate in the drug takeback, which is being held at the police department and also at Tri-Cities Hospital. From 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and that date is October the 25th. And the CEO will attend the HRHA commissioners meeting with the schedule for October the 20th at five o'clock PM. And we all, well, we, 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 we will be participating in the city's trunk or treat on October 31st. And that's from five PM to seven PM and the police department will be grilling hot dogs. It will be held at the gravel parking lot right across from the library. Crime reduction strategies. We're leveraging our advanced technology, our Vaca security system. We use our Vaca system that allows us to enhance situation awareness, monitor high traffic areas. And provide rapid investigative support through high quality evidence. Our flock safety cameras, these license plate readers help us identify, track vehicles connected with crimes and helps us in apprehend, apprehension and deter criminal activity. We have strong, our partnership with our local state and federal partners. We maintain close working relationship with partner agencies, ensuring that we share information, coordinate efforts. Uh, we have a detective assigned to the one B task force from Hopewell. And we also have a detective assigned to the capital area region future, uh, task forces. Uh, community focus programs, Real Life Project, our project Safety, Live and Free, I work with this nonprofit. We connect individuals with resources that address root causes of crimes such as addiction, unemployment and lack of support. Helping people transition to a healthy, healthier, more stable lives. In 2025, Real Life, uh, Community Transformation Award, uh, that we receive for collaboration with the community in balance and revision program. And this award was presented at the Spring Gala, uh, to the Virginia House of Delegates Kerry Conyer, uh, myself, Deputy Chief Reed, Superintendent, Superintendent Melanie Hackney, uh, Chief of Probation Anthony McClureen, uh, DeArchie Lewis and Jackie Shoredat. And our proactive policing invisibility, uh, direct patrols in neighborhoods and also in commercial areas. Directed enforcement and identif- and identified hotspots to help, uh, to stop crime before it occurs, proactive policing. We still conducted outdoor, outdoor road calls with that, that they are held in different areas of the city. And after the outdoor road calls, we do foot patrols in those areas and speak with the neighbors to determine any concerns or needs. And after a, a major event, we do, it's called a neighborhood reset that we'll go out, uh, the next morning and to, uh, see can we gather any other significant, uh, information or even evidence to talk with citizens to assure them that they're aware of whatever occurred in their neighborhood, answer any questions that they may have. Uh, next slide, our crime reduction strategies with data-driven decision-making. We util- we utilize crime trend analysis, intelligence reports and technology based on, based technology, uh, data to deploy resources effectively, focus on areas where we can make the greatest impact. Prevention and education, doing public outreach, neighborhood watching incentives and community programming like the Citizens Police Academy. We've provided education on, on crime prevention strategies, empower residents to play an active role in keeping our community safe. And this earmark funding request is nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred, nine hu- nine hundred ninety-nine and seven hundred. It's no match required. Rewards be announced in late 2026 by Congressman, Congressman McClellan, Senator Kane and Warner. And if we, uh, do get this earmarked for this funding, this will be able to consolidate what we do in the police department and, and dispatch. That the flock enhance LPR, uh, and this video integration gateway, uh, flock safety gunshot detectives. That, that will give us information about, uh, when guns are being fired. So we're, we're hoping that, uh, that's approved. And the operation C Spa came before you last month, uh, and we have, uh, it's $500,000 max per request. And a hundred thousand dollars per request for equipment and we put in for, for over a hundred thousand dollars for equipment for the detective division and for technology. And that would be used to improve our crime scene processing, the crime scene mapping software, uh, training on about crime reduction strategies and crime analysis and advance our tactical support. That concludes my crime summary and information about hiring and, uh, what are we doing to deal with crime in the city. And that concludes my presentation and I'm here to answer any question that you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions for Chief Taylor? Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner?
I'd just like to say thank you for this comprehensive report. We really appreciate your efforts. Thank you so much.
All right. Seeing no lights. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on from actions resulting from closed session. Uh, do I have a motion to appoint Drew Dayberry to the Economic Development Authority?
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by, uh, Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing their lights, roll call please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Motion passes seven zero.
Is there a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Thomas Waxstaff and Mr. Matthew Mellon to the Hopewell Redevelopment Housing Authority?
Yes.
So move.
Okay.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Vanette Taylor to the Hopewell Redevelopment Housing Authority?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Stokes? Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. All right. Moving into the rest of our meeting. Uh, at this time, I will have the prayer by Reverend Blow, uh, followed by the pledge of allegiance by myself. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful night that you've made and we thank you for allowing us to be here to gather together in this city council meeting. We ask, Lord, that you would watch over every member of the city council. Bless them, Lord God, with wisdom, knowledge and understanding. Father, we pray, Lord God, that this city, Lord God, would come together in unity and accomplish all the goals that you have set before it. Father, we thank you for all the many blessings you give us and we ask you, Lord, to have your way. We ask this in all things in the precious, mighty, magnificent name of Jesus. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
One second.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Seeing no lights for discussion, roll call please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. Uh, communications from citizens. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you read the, uh, statement?
A communication from citizens period limited to a total of thirty minutes occurs at all, in each regular council meeting. Persons addressing council approach the microphone, give their name and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number. Each comment is limited to three minutes. No person is permitted to speak on an item scheduled for public hearing. All remarks must be addressed to the council as a body. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive or slanderless, slanderless statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred from future communications from citizens and removed.
Okay. I don't have anyone signed up for communications from citizens tonight. So we will move into our regular business with the first one being with Mr. Ward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight we have a conditional use permit request as it relates to 400 Weston Lane. Also identified, uh, as two separate parcels currently, parcel zero six one, zero two three one and zero six one, zero two three two. The applicant is Historic Hopewell Foundation, um, as well as the owner of this property. This, uh, property is located in Ward Three and Zoned R4. Got some maps here just showing the two parcels as it relates to this application. Uh, there's an interior parcel and then one that surrounds, surrounds it. So you may remember, uh, we recently just added the use, uh, museum to the R4 district. And with that approval and that allowable use, the conditional use permit requirement, uh, was added to that as an allowable use. And so currently, um, Weston Manor is considered a legal non-conforming use, uh, because it meets the zoning ordinance intent, but does not have the conditional use permit at this point. So that's why we're here this evening. Uh, by virtue of approving this conditional use permit, you will then make them fully legal conforming. So, uh, making them legal conforming, uh, means that they would be able to replace a semi-permanent structure, which in this case is a tent, uh, with a permanent structure. Historic Hopewell Foundation will be able to provide additional amenities to support events at their location. Uh, specifically ADA compliant restrooms as well as a warming kitchen to support events. And, uh, they will also allow them to provide their own storage space and a climate-controlled archive space. All of which, uh, that I just mentioned, they do not currently have. So, uh, under staff analysis, staff makes the following observations. Number one, that this evident as a, as essentially a cultural institution, quote unquote, a museum under our current ordinance has been evident since nineteen seventy-two with no known negative impacts. And of course, our comprehensive plan does support, um, enhancement of historical and cultural resources. So staff does recommend, uh, approval of conditional use permit request, uh, with, I've got three conditions here, but I'm gonna, um, qualify this when I get to the end. Uh, number one, uh, the first condition being that the two parcels be administratively resubdivided to combine them into one. Number two, that the pavilion will be constructed in substantial conformance, uh, with the plans and designs submitted with the application, uh, on August nineteenth. And this last one, I admit, I was under the, uh, wrong impression as to what the current use of this storage trailer is that's on site. I thought it was a, they were, that was being used for their, uh, to house their archives currently. And so I had the condition that the, the trailer would be removed once the new archive space was put in place. I've since learned that that trailer is actually used to hold, um, landscaping equipment, stor- storage of landscaping equipment. So if that particular condition was removed, it would not be a big deal. Uh, so anyway, that's the end of my presentation. Um, the applicant and Historic Hopewell Foundation representatives are here. Um, Mr. Robbins has asked to actually, um, say a few words, so I will turn it over to him, uh, real quick unless you want to do the public hearing first.
That's fine. He can go ahead. He can come on up, Mr. Robbins.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to, to speak. Weston Manor has been a very good neighbor for the city of Hopewell and it has activities that are involved with the museum house. And there is actually a museum campus there. So operating with a tent and porta-johns and a substant- uh, sub, not a very good kitchen, it's in the cellar, these are some things that can be all incorporated into this pavilion structure as a cultural center that could have events, lectures, educational opportunities, even weddings. Uh, it's an open pavilion. Um, nothing would change as far as the numbers. The capacity that we've designed it for is a hundred and thirty-three people sitting in chairs. Um, right now, none of the events that are held there have had more than a hundred people over, over time. So it's something that they need and we've been working on the design for about a year and a half. And I think it'll be in keeping with harmony of the structure of the Weston Manor itself. It'll have cedar shakes, a metal roof, um, brick, so it should look very nice and be an asset to the city. Moreover, I think it's an opportunity for the city to kind of couple the beacon, the boathouse and the pavilion. All of these are on the river, so, um, it kind of ties it all together. I don't really have a whole lot more to say. I spoke to the planning commission, they approved it, so I'm here to answer questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Robbins? Okay. Hearing none. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I have three people signed up tonight. Uh, the first one is Mr. Tom Waxstaff.
Uh, good evening. I'm Tom Waxstaff. I currently live in Ward Four. Just moved there. I just want to say thank you to Chris Ward in his department. Historic Hopewell Foundation has one part-time administrative person and one time, one part-time person who takes care of the, of the property. And everything we do is done by volunteers. The support we got from Chris and his department and of course Dan Robbins made this possible. And we're looking so forward to having this in, online sometime next year. You may not realize that we offered eight concerts this year at no charge to the public. And we ran lunch and learn over at the American Legion from mid-May to almost the end of August at no charge and the average attendance was seventy-five people. Also, since I have to work every concert, uh, so many people tell me they had never been to Hopewell or Weston before. And it's nice to see we get people that do not know about our wonderful little city coming in to see how great it is. And thank you for y'all's support.
All right. Uh, next person that I have signed up for this public hearing on, uh, Historic Hopewell Foundation is Ms. Karen Thayer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Um, I'm here tonight because I can't seem to get any help. Um, I've applied for the tax relief and on the application, it clearly states to say disability of veterans must be one hundred percent service-connected and permanent in total. On my paperwork that I received from the Veterans Affairs, it does state that he is service-connected, yes. But the office upstairs, because it does not state one hundred percent on the paperwork, they are denying my application. So who do I turn to? Where do I go? Who do I appeal the decision to when it, that's the only one making the decisions? So where do I go? I don't have, I don't know where to go anymore.
So, um, Ms. Thayer, this is the public hearing on the, um, Historic Hopewell Foundation.
So did I, did I fill out the paper, the wrong paper?
I, I can understand the, the mistake, um, with four sheets up there. Uh, but to answer your question, um, if, and I assume you went to the Commissioner of Revenue's office?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, what I've, um, so if that's what the policy is on the book, um, right now there, there, I don't believe unless, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rogers, I don't think there is an appeal policy. But I do think that this is, you know, something that I think would benefit our citizens. Um, if we could explore, um, tiered and phased, um, tax relief for, uh, veterans that may not be a hundred percent disabled, but they may be fifty percent, sixty percent, uh, something near to that effect.
We'll look into it and get back to you.
Okay. All right. Can we have that as, um, an action item, uh, coming out? All right. Thank you. And we have your, um, phone number, or no, we don't have, uh, either of them.
I will give that to you, Mayor.
Okay. Do you mind staying for, to the end of the meeting?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And can I sign up for the, the other so that I can speak tonight?
Well, we, that's already, that's already happened, yes, ma'am.
So I just signed up on the wrong paper.
Yes, ma'am.
So can I have the, the time to speak tonight?
Yes, ma'am. I can still give you, you know, your two minutes.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Go ahead. Oh, no, go ahead now. Yeah.
Okay. Um, as far as the retreat, um, the only thing- As far as the retreat, the only thing that I have to say about that is I wished you all would have spent your time here in Hopewell so that the money could have been spent in the community rather than going out of the community. I understand that you all may have been looking for opinions or thoughts, you know, to better, better access Hopewell or give Hopewell something better to have. But so many restaurants suffered because you didn't take the time to spend the money here in Hopewell. The only other thing that I did see that Mr. Rogers is asking for a raise, and my opinion on that is right now is just not the right time to be asking for that, just because of the problems that Hopewell is having. It may be a rumor that you had asked for that raise, but even if, it's just my opinion that right now would not be the right time to spend that money.
Sure. I think I know where your confusion's coming from, and no one has asked for a raise. I think you're talking about the city attorney's amended contract, and all his amended contract did on the salary was state what his current salary was from when he was contracted, and he got the COLA increase just like every other city employee did.
Okay. So that may be something that I needed to look back at.
Yeah, I was sent a screenshot on that, and that was, that was some very bad misinformation that was communicated to the public.
So you can see where I, I can feel that way?
Yes, ma'am. But I wouldn't expect anything less from that individual.
Well, I would like to think a lot of Hopewell would feel that same way.
But no, thank you. But that was an opportunity that we could clear that information of.
Okay. And I really would, would like to see this getting taken care of. If I could speak to you personally at the end of the meeting, and how we could maybe better access the veterans and their wives.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one I have signed up for tonight on this public hearing is Mr. Ed Hauser.
Okay, well, I signed on the wrong sheet, too.
You did, yes, sir.
Ed Hauser, Ward 5. I hope y'all enjoyed spending $17,000 of taxpayers' money in Williamsburg. It could have been a lot cheaper. Okay, y'all paying attention now?
Of course I'm paying attention.
Well, all the heads are turning one way. But, you know, you want to take Hopewell money and spend in Williamsburg when we're already having financial difficulties here in Hopewell, when you could have saved us a ton of money by doing what you did here in Hopewell? I mean, that's pretty much ridiculous. You know, I've heard the famous saying, disappointed in people. That's an understatement with y'all. I mean, y'all can't even spend Hopewell money in Hopewell, you gotta take it to somewhere else and give it away.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to, oh no, we do need to take action. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right. I do have one question for Historic Hopewell Foundation. The two requests from staff, are those okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, cool.
They've actually already, they're working on their administrative resub right now.
Okay, great. All right, Counselor Joyner?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CUP request to operate a museum with an accessory structure on parcel number 061-0232, also identified as 400 Weston Lane.
Okay. And that's not with the third?
That's correct.
Okay.
First two conditions.
Yeah, just with, yeah, with the only two, first two conditions. All right, I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing the lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to R2.
Deputy Director Davis will be presenting to the next two items.
Okay, sharing the workload.
Yeah, we'll try and do it.
Mayor Pardon, I don't have the agenda in front of me, can you let me know what the...
Sure, it's the public hearing to amend Articles 9A for the Hopewell zoning ordinance for sign regulations, second reading.
All right, so this is the City Council Public Hearing and Second Reading for this zoning amendment request for signage. The background on this is that our goal with this ordinance is to clarify some of the city's regulations, particularly when it comes to signage in business districts for freestanding signage, although other sign types are addressed as well. We will be addressing inconsistencies throughout the ordinance and responding to business and property owner requests. We have received multiple requests that have been incorporated into this ordinance, and it was initiated in July by the Planning Commission, and it has been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Some of the proposed changes to freestanding signs will modify sign area and height requirements in the B2, B3, and B4 districts. It would allow an additional sign on through lots in B3 and B4 districts without having to go through the modification process that currently is required today. It would also exempt some smaller signs, less than four square feet, from their monument sign requirements to allow a little more flexibility, particularly for directional signage. It also has some changes to the very specific dimensional requirements for freestanding signs, particularly as it relates to standards for the base and the foundation and height to width ratio that have become problematic for some applicants. Also, since there are some changes to height and those dimensions, we're recommending to add a small setback from right-of-way so that you don't have a case where a sign might fall into the right-of-way. Other proposed changes incorporated into this request are adding maximum aggregate of 25% window coverage, whether that is temporary or permanent, that's for window signage, and then also modifying and clarifying some of the requirements related to awning sign area. There are also, within this ordinance package, proposed changes to the B1 signage. We took through some amendments last year and have received some feedback, both through, from citizens, property owners, and also from a consultant that we're working with on design guidelines, with some recommended changes for a little more flexibility, particularly when it comes to buildings that have multiple sides and need a little more signage to attract to their building, also projecting signs, freestanding signs, and eliminating the monument sign standards for freestanding signs in this district. With that, staff recommends approval as presented, and Planning Commission, as I said before, has also recommended approval, and I stand ready to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Davis? Okay, seeing none. I'm gonna open up the public hearing, I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this public hearing tonight? No? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to adopt the amended articles as presented tonight for the Hopewell zoning ordinance to modify sign regulations?
So moved.
All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. R3.
The next package of ordinance amendments is a zoning amendment request related to urban agriculture, and this is your public hearing, second reading. For the background, the applicant is the city of Hopewell, this is a project that was initiated also by the Planning Commission. There are multiple sections of the current ordinance impacted, primarily because we're adding this use, we're first adding the use to definitions, as well as adding the use to different parts of the ordinance, and then adding development standards to regulate the use. The public hearing was in June with the Planning Commission, and they did recommend approval. So I've streamlined this a little bit from the work session, but we are adding two primary types of urban agriculture uses. One is a market garden with a definition, and the second is for indoor urban agriculture that I'll touch on later. The definition of market garden is shown here. This is primarily serving for someone that wants to have a garden and be able to have a small stand at the property in order to sell fruits and vegetables, and could also donate the produce to other areas as well. There's some other definitions for different accessory uses or structures, hoop houses, greenhouses, and produce stands that are added for this package, as well as a set of performance standards that market gardens will have to comply with. Primary concerns that this is addressing is really the issues related to junk accumulation, inappropriate uses of properties for storage or junkyard conditions, inoperable vehicles. We really don't want someone to take the market garden idea and create a use that wouldn't otherwise be allowed in that district. There are standards for different types of onsite storage for composting soils and mulch, as well as maintenance and operations. And Counselor Joyner, I did modify the language from, based off of your comment at the work session, and added some, an additional standard related to hoop houses and their maintenance.
Thank you.
Additionally, the other use that will be added is urban agriculture. The definition is included here for indoor operations. In this case, we are proposing that this be added to the B districts and the manufacturing districts versus market gardens would only be added to the business districts. Proposed use standards were based off of best practices in planning, and primarily, again, limits here would be on exterior storage, no keeping of animals, and then in those business districts, making sure they still keep some retail frontage to activate the storefronts. We did receive a public comment, but I have been informed that the citizen is gonna make these comments themselves here, so I will save that for him. And then staff is, does recommend approval as presented, as did Planning Commission.
Okay. All right, are there any questions for Ms. Davis before we open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing is now opened, I have Mr. Anthony Sylvester.
Good evening, Anthony Sylvester, I live at 109 Crescent Avenue here in the city. I had forwarded some comments, you can ignore those, I've talked to staff about them, and I think I would ask the council to adopt it as it is. This is a wonderful example, I applaud Mr. Ward and Ms. Davis for working very hard on this addition to the ordinance. This is, I don't want to say it's a big deal, but it's kind of a big deal. This is an amazing opportunity for a lot of people to do some wonderful things for the community, and I think it's gonna have a contagious effect. I think you're gonna see it sort of spread, people are gonna do something on their parcel that they couldn't do before that's non-conforming. I'm hopeful that some people will adopt parcels that have laid, you know, without use or any productive use for many years, and then all of a sudden say, you know, I'd like to do that, that's an avocation for me to grow produce, maybe get it to the food pantry and whatnot. So again, I don't want to make too much of a moment, but I hate to see an opportunity like this not to go by, not to take the opportunity to applaud the planning department for doing what they did. This is what's supposed to work. We heard criticism earlier, I'm not gonna, you know, address that, but this is what's supposed to happen, and I think you should take the moment to recognize that we have good people here in the city that work really hard, and I applaud them again, I've said that a number of times. Again, I wouldn't be much of a lawyer if I didn't forward those observations earlier to council. This is a step in faith for you to do this, to pass this ordinance, but I think, you know, I can speak with great confidence, I think it's gonna work. I think other communities have shown that it works. So I'd ask that you approve it as is. If it needs to be tweaked down the road, I'm sure staff will identify those concerns and bring them forward. Thank you for the opportunity, and I thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the Hopewell zoning ordinance to add Hopewell agricultural uses and performance as presented tonight? And I'll second it. Motion was made by Counselor Harris, seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? Seeing the lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
I've stayed.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay. Moving on to R4, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I have Mr. Chris Culp with our bond counsel with us for an ordinance to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds for the city of Hopewell to take care of several projects within the city, one being Mansion Hills Pump Station, North Colonial Pump Station, some capital projects within Public Works, City Hall Roof Replacement, Courts Building Havak Replacement, West Randolph Street Share Use Path, pavement rehabilitation, South Mesa Drive, Heretic Avenue Stormwater Improvements, as well as city projects Riverwalk, Hopewell Community Center, Riverside Park, Atwater Park, and City Point Playground. I will turn it over to Mr. Culp.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Again, Chris Culp from Huntington Andrews, Caruthers, and Richmond, serving as bond counsel. I and my colleagues have served as bond counsel and had the wonderful opportunity to serve as the city for more than 25 years. We haven't had occasion to be before you for a little while, since the last bond issue was about 2015. So anyway, glad to be here tonight. My role as bond counsel is to work as part of the team with finance, city attorney's office, city manager, and your financial advisor, Davenport Company, to put together a financing that works best for the city and tries to achieve the lowest cost of funds that we can in the market at the time. And then my role at the, as, from a legal standpoint, is to help advise the city that we follow the necessary state law provisions regarding the issuance of debt, and that from a federal tax standpoint, we also following the IRS regulations so that the debt can be issued on a tax-exempt basis. That helps achieve the lower cost of funds than a regular taxable commercial loan. And then we provide a legal opinion to the investor at the closing of the deal that the bond has been duly authorized, is enforceable, and that the interest is tax-exempt. So this is a two-step process in the authorization. We have the notice of public hearing that was advertised for the public hearing tonight, that's required by the Public Finance Act, and we have for you the ordinance for consideration. And then we will be back in two weeks for the bond resolution, which will provide more detail about the specific financing and the structure that the Davenport folks have been working to achieve. And then we'll be able to issue the bonds in November. But this is just the first step of a two-part process. The ordinance is a, just a short-form authorization, that's what's required by a city charter that the council authorizations of debt by ordinance. So we do a short-form ordinance that gives just the basics, and then we come back with a bond resolution that has the more specific details for the issuance. So that's, that's an overview, but happy to answer questions that council may have, and happy to be here, thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Harris?
What exactly is a general obligation bond?
General obligation bond is, from the bondholder's standpoint, the most secure debt instrument because it is pledging the city's full faith and credit behind the bond, so the full taxing authority of the city. So, the bond investor has the right, if the city were not to make a payment, to go to court and require the city to raise taxes to pay the debt service. Nobody expects that to happen because the city will pay its debts, but it is the most secure financing, different than a revenue bond, which is secured by, for example, utility revenues or an enterprise-based system. So, it's the typical debt that Virginia localities are issuing is general obligation debt. Is that helpful?
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance for capital funding as presented tonight?
So move.
Motion's been made by...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is on a first reading. You can adopt it now, but it's in the regular course. It'll come before council again for a vote in the next meeting.
In two weeks, okay.
Okay. I mean, I'm sorry. So, tonight's not the public hearing for it. It's the...
It is. It is. It's all of that. It can also be the vote on it, but that's a sort of a first reading vote, a five-member vote.
Okay.
Alternatively, it is going to just come back in front of city council in two weeks for a vote in the regular course. Sorry, new stuff with the new rules. Under the new rules, every... everything from the presentation to the discussion to the public hearing is all in the first... at the first reading, and that's this.
Okay, all right.
So, it's not necessary for us to vote on it tonight, right?
No, we don't have to vote on it tonight, correct?
We can if we want to.
Yeah, we can if we want to.
That's right. The default would be to not vote on it tonight, but city council under the charter is always free to decide to vote on something at a first reading, but that's not what staff is proposing here. Staff is proposing a vote at the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Well, we need to open up the public hearing anyway. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for it tonight. Is there anyone that would like to speak on in the audience? Okay, seeing none, closing up the public hearing. What is the wish of council? Would you guys like to vote on it now or wait two weeks?
I'd rather not. I'd rather wait. I'd rather wait.
Okay, I got one that wants to wait. Okay, all right. All right, so we will have that as unfinished business or our first item at the next meeting. We will move now into R5, resolution for the Hope Center for additional funding.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a resolution amending the 26 budget and designated funds from capital expenditures to the Hope Center in the amount of ninety thousand. At the last council meeting, I believe, council allocated appropriate one hundred and twenty thousand, so we need additional ninety thousand for the Hope Center.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 budget and designated funds for... from capital expenditures to the Hope Center as presented?
So move.
All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Ellis. I'm surprised you didn't jump on that one, Mr. Harris. I said, I'm surprised you didn't jump on that one. Seeing no lights for discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, moving on to R6.
All right, we have our resolution to amend the 26 budget and designate funds from capital expenditures to citywide road and asphalt assessment in the amount of one hundred and three... thirty-three thousand fifty dollars.
Okay, do we have any questions for Ms. Jordan? Seeing no lights. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 budget and designate funds from the capital expenditures to the citywide road and asphalt assessment as presented tonight? All right. Motion is made by Counselor Repoli and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Don't feel bad, Mr. Harris. I didn't even get on this one. All right, seeing no lights for discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, council.
Yep, all right. R7, Mr. Bennett?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. I come before you tonight and present, if that's okay. I come before you tonight seeking some additional funding for the Hopewell City Marina and specifically for our Project Eldoc restoration project that we've been working on for several months now. And essentially, in summary, what has taken place is we've made great progress in the Eldoc restoration project. During the course of the project, we discovered some additional deficiencies that we did not anticipate, an engineer who was evaluating the structure did not anticipate, and so I have a ninety thousand dollar deficit on the project. It represents just under... just under twenty percent for the project. I just wanted to show you some pictures of where we started with this project in the middle of the summer, the kind of the condition, and when we were getting into it and removed the roof structure above, some pieces just actually just came apart. We don't even know how it was able to stand as long as it was. This picture here shows the new... all the new framing that was done. The original engineer evaluation estimated about seventy percent of the structure above the piles would have to be replaced, and during the course of the project, starting one end and working away the other, it was determined that about ninety-five percent of the structure had to be replaced. The good news is, as you go by the project today, what you're going to see is all the heavy framing, construction is done, the roof underlayment material is on top of the plywood, and we have already delivered to the site. In this lower photo here, you'll see the blue tarps. We have the metal roofing delivered to the site. The new roof that we're putting on, the structure, is a standing seam roof. It will not have any exposed fasteners or screws. One of the reasons why the structure failed originally was there was exposed fasteners that over time the wind would move and cause each nail to leak, and where each nail leaked into the framing above, from that nail, it basically began to grow out rot. Everything that we've replaced it with is now pressure-treated, which will also extend to like the original structure was not treated in the same way as modern treatment. And so, we've received so many compliments from citizens, voters, anglers, people coming to Hopewell, and I have a full waiting list for people to go in as soon as we're done and lease the spaces inside. People as far as the way as New York are waiting to bring their vessel down here to get it under root, so we're really excited about it. And that's essentially where we're at. There's a resolution that was put together here, and the director, deputy director, Estacy Jordan, recommended that we take this ninety thousand dollars from salary savings for this project.
All right, is there a resolution... or excuse me, is there a motion to approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 budget and designate funds to the Hopewell City Marina Repairs and Maintenance Fund as presented tonight?
So move.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. I'll invite everybody to the big ribbon cutting.
All right, and R8, we've already accomplished. So, with that, I call the meeting adjourned. I think that was even faster than the last one.